I'd like to call this board meeting to order.
Leave me alone.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Sturgill?
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of visitors. Everybody here at this head table has been here enough now to no longer be considered visitor. I guess you guys are all family. Hearing of the public, first hearing of the public.
I've only got given three minutes. Anyways, March Walker, 2955 Lexington. I have had my idea from getting the kids getting up to school to be here at 7:20 in the morning, and I got to other thinking. The kids come from very difficult family life, many of them, not all of them. And they can get up, they have to get up in the middle of the night, and then they come to school and it's still dark. That is sinful. And anyways, so there are some states that are already converting the time to being later in the morning, like 8:30. That's another one point. And the other kids have a hard time getting to the school and finding transportation and having problems, and they have family problems. Lorraine has a high poverty rate. That does not help either. So, let's see. Seattle, Los Angeles, and I have 10 cities. Imagine while some of the kids live in these towns in terrible conditions. I'm not saying that we are there by any way in the means. The state of Ohio has some other states coming up for, like we are, Dayton, Columbus, Lima, Akron, Canton, and Toledo. That doesn't speak very well for the state, period. Doesn't mean this is local. And I have an idea is that we could have something that would be, years ago, they used to have orphanage taken over by the foster parents. The boys and, I'm tying this all together, the boys and girls clubs seem to do an excellent job with the kids after school and keeping them busy and occupied, but you don't know where they go from when they leave. Their parents are evidently willing to have them go to school to the Boys and Girls Club or other organizations of such. So therefore, with the kids that are in poverty, bad home lives, and they want to do, and they only know what they see, and if they were exposed to more positive things, they would be better. So I have a solution, we can't call it orphanages because that is an obsolete term. So putting the term maybe school sleepovers or something like that, that the kids could stay, I mean, the ones, you have the statistics of how many people that are in this predicament. If they would be able to have a place that they could sleep over and stay overnight from Monday to Friday, Sundays, Saturdays and Sundays, the parents can have the kids or whatever. It is nothing that they're going to hold their gun to their head, but it'd be a place where the kids to be guided better and have more direction and be exposed to other things in their life. I drove by the old telephone office recently, and that would be maybe a good place, but you know how many kids would be involved, whether it be 20 or whether it be 100, that would need this kind of assistance. Now, where do you get the money? Well, with all the extra help that has been hired, maybe they could do without some of those hits. We have too much administration anyway, and I've heard that from teachers past and present, too much administration, and they can't do their job. So, I was going to tie that in with making it quick. Anyways, so with them, oh, with the pay, how do you pay for it? Have a lottery, or a 50/50, I mean, or 60/40. The school would get 60 percent, and the winner would get 40 percent. You would sell tickets at school functions or any place you could find a group of people that would be willing to help support the schools in the gambling. And to make sure that that money would stay in that area and not be re-appropriated for some other thing, if they find they have too much money to cover certain, to cover their expenses, that, well, let's spend money on something else. And that would pay for the lodging for these kids and some of the care. Let's see, but that would basically help. I made my point. I wanted to be clear about it, but I think that you have someplace for these kids to stay other than going home to who knows what. Like I say, I'm not saying everybody, but there's probably at least 20 or 50 of them that could do with a service like this. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hello, Barbie Washington, Riverside Drive. It's more of a statement, that's okay. I encourage everyone to watch the Ohio Senate Education Committee today. Our Chief Rivera and Mayor Rittenhour did a great job at explaining some of the difficulties and chaos that we're going through. So I think it would be beneficial for everyone to watch.
You're good, thank you. And I concur. Jay, I'm disappointed. You're normally first to the microphone. You've got nothing, huh? Any other public comment? Moving on, next item, approval of minutes. Need a motion?
Support.
Roll call.
Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Old business. I'm sure Mr. Riley, if your presentation would follow in old business since we've discussed it kind of before, or is that something that we need to discuss?
Well, if you're directing your comments to the legal opinion I issued regarding public records, if you wish me to review it and summarize it for the board and for the public, I'm prepared to do that.
Please.
For everyone's information, I did prepare at the request of the board a legal opinion directed to the board's access and right to public records that might otherwise be created in the normal course of business of Lorraine City School District. That public opinion, that legal opinion is a matter of public record in and of itself. So for those of you who'd like to read it, you can access it through, I would think, the board's offices or the treasurer's office. Essentially, what the, to summarize it, because it's quite a complex opinion, several pages and many sites and citations, essentially what the legal opinion says is that there is a distinction between the school district and the Board of Education. Under Ohio law, they are both separate political subdivisions, and as a consequence of that, they each have a set of public records. As well, you have the Office of the Secretary, who has his own responsibilities by state law, and as a consequence, he has records which are within his domain. It is my opinion, and we've indicated this to the board, that the records that are solely within the control of the school district must be made, for those to be disclosed to the board, the board must make a public records request. That's a formal request for those records. The records that the board has generates on its own, those, of course, it has control over and can access. And significantly, in this opinion, the records of the treasurer's office are, as far as I am concerned, and my opinion does say this, available to the board without a public records request. We go on specifically to say here that the records of the treasurer that are the nature of the financial affairs of the district, matters of the payment of money, contracts that may have been entered into for services to be provided to the board, those things, if they're in the treasurer's domain, under his control, the board has unfettered access to those records as well. So it's basically a three-part opinion. The records that are within the domain of the school district solely under the control of the CEO, for any other party to receive those, you would have to issue and make a public records request. For those records that are within the control solely of the board, of course, they have access to those. If a third party wanted those records, they would have to make a public records request. Significantly, as I said a moment ago, the records within the domain of the treasurer are available to the board without the making of a public records request, because he functions, as I read the statutes, at the direction of the board, and therefore, his records are their records legally. So, those are the outline of the legal opinion. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to field those tonight.
I'm very clear. Do you have any follow-up?
No, but I'd like to compliment Josh on the way that he has maintained the records and the way he has worked not only for the board and walked that line, but also worked for the CEO, that he has done a tremendous job, that when the district had the review from the state, that all the way back to 214 to 215, to 215 to 216, to 216 to 217, the district had excellent reviews. And to this day, they have had excellent reviews. And I don't know if we are giving out certificates or awards or whatever, but Josh Hill has done a magnificent job of walking what I consider a tightrope of working for the community and giving us all the information that we need and working as such a diplomat for us, and then working also for the CEO and doing that job, too. That must be a magnificent way to work and not always, what I would say, step in the muddy waters. And he has been doing it each and every time and giving us the information that we need. And that's what I wanted to say. I was pleased in the newspaper on March 28, 2019, that it says, as of March 26, Lorraine School has received $2,903, $728, and 34 cents to pay for Hardy's salary, which is estimated the total to get from the district through the end of the year. The State Education Department paid for all of Hardy's salary last year, and Lorraine did not spend one nickel on the salary of the CEO. I was pleased to hear that, because that's a substantial amount of money to even think about. That's almost $300,000. And I was pleased to know that that did not come out of our treasury.
Any comments, sir?
The only thing I would say is that the one constant in the office when it comes to those audits, I was not here back in '14, but the majority of my staff was, so the constant, the clean audits should be credited more so to them than myself. And I'm sure previous treasurer, Dale Weber, would agree. They have, when it comes to everything going on, they're the constant, the ones that steady the ship. So I would want the credit to go to them, not myself.
Well, that's still fantastic, and I'm glad to hear you say that. Also, let's talk about Title I. It says, because everybody's been talking about that, that the residents and the school board have asked how the Lorraine School is spending that money, known as the Title I funding, which as federal guidelines, has been appropriately used. Mr. Hill said that the district has 100% in compliance with those rules. He added that he will ask the state auditor about spending any time there is to be any type of major change in how that Lorraine uses that Title I money. And I think that's excellent, because we had some worry about how that money was going to be spent, because you know that Title I money, those teachers were replaced into the classroom. And so that was a worry that we had, how that money was used. So now we know.
No, we don't fully know.
I think we still have...
What that says is...
Well, correct me.
That our treasurer says that we are 100% spending the money appropriately. What it doesn't say is how many of those Title I services were cut and what we did with that title funding. That question still has not been answered. Again, when we look at, you want to talk about state standardized test scores, in order to increase state test scores, you're going to need to give these kids the interventions they need. And this district removed those interventions. So what did we do with the money and how did that happen? That doesn't, I mean, that newspaper article doesn't answer those questions, and those questions still haven't been answered. So how many Title I teachers did we have previous, and how many do we have now? What of those services have been removed from this school district? And of those dollars, how much of those dollars has been spent on the astronomical administration that has been put into the school district over the course of the last year and a half? Those questions still have not been answered. Again, I'm not questioning Josh on spending the money appropriately, because there are many ways you can spend the money, and I'm not saying he's doing something illegal. So that states that, for sure, based on that article. But again, there are a lot of unanswered questions as it comes to Title I funding and the interventions in this school district.
So we need to have that looked into more?
We've been asking that question for a year and a half, and we still haven't gotten the answer. And again, getting back to Mr. Riley's conversation about public records requests, I'm glad to hear that we don't need to make a public records request to get the information that we initially thought we should be getting naturally anyway as the elected Board of Education, because we were in that conversation, right?
Just to follow up a bit, if I might, and I'll, you know, keep my comments brief. Your board counsel has also reviewed the legal opinion that I issued with Mallory Santiago and is fully in agreement with the way by which the legal opinion reaches its conclusions. I did have an opportunity as well to speak with your treasurer briefly about it, and I think that, I don't want to speak for him, but I did not hear any pushback from him in the sense of a disagreement. So on this particular point, if you are looking for records that otherwise might be in the possession of your treasurer, it's my opinion, and I'm advising you, that you can ask for those without having to go through a formal process. And to the extent that you don't know the answers to the questions that you're asking, it would seem to me that the records that you need to see are available to you.
I don't see, I don't think this is, to me, it's kind of an ethical question. I think everybody in here knows that when we had title funding, that they used it for, they used it for tutoring, for teachers and for people, and they used it to take kids out of class and to do one-on-one with them. And instead of that, that money is being used, and tell me if I'm wrong, that money is being used to pay for extra administrators. So basically, we took something away from the children, and it's not being done now. It's just, it's just, it's just not being done.
Correct.
Okay, so we lost something, we lost something education-wise, okay? And I don't know, and I hate to say this in front of administrators, but I don't know too many administrators that actually teach children, teachers teach children, okay? Administrators do other work. But what I don't like is that Title I is not being used to actually educate children. And I think that's, I think that's what it's for. Now, I know that if they use 5% in administration, that somewhere, there has to be a document that says, this person put 5% of his time into, and I know that it's legal, and I've had, I've had these conversations with Josh, and he's kind of told me how it goes, but still, what didn't sit well with me is it's not being put into children, okay? And that's, to me, that's where the problem lies, okay? It's not being used to service children.
And I think that's probably, from my point of view, I can give you guys the breakdown on how it's spent, I can give you, you know, dollar for dollar, the breakdown percentage-wise, I can do that, I can repackage it a million different ways, I can show you teacher costs, I can show you support costs. What I think you guys are missing, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the why and the structure. So it's the why are, why have it, why has he decided to go in this direction of going with the administrators in there? That I can't, I can tell you that we're 100% in compliance when it comes to the spending, that I've checked into. And that I did before we even went down the road of doing the pooling or even look to put the people, how the current structure is. What I can't give you is the why. I wasn't a part of those discussions necessarily of why and the structure.
I am not questioning any legality, but it's, I would say, as a board, when you look how money is spent and what you get for your dollar, okay, I would much rather put it into, you know, instead of having 40 new administrators, I think if you put 40 new teachers in there, okay, and you lessen, and you make smaller classes, I think something like that would work out better, okay? But I just, I guess, I just don't like the way the money was spent, okay? And that's the bottom line.
So are we saying that it would have been better to use the money for remediation for the students than administration?
You certainly, you certainly can eliminate the interventions that the students need and then attack the teachers for not educating the kids, because these kids aren't scoring on a state standardized test like they should.
All right.
Recommendations of the treasurer?
I have item 8.01. It's the approval of the resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor for 1920.
Can you clarify the purpose of this? Well, actually, go ahead, we can do discussion. Sorry.
I can give you some clarity.
Not a term.
I guess we need a motion. Motion? Need a motion?
I get, yeah, I'll make the motion. It can't hurt to make the motion.
Motion of support.
Discussion, right?
Discussion?
Can you clarify this?
Sure. This is just, it's the standard annual, they go through and based on current assessed values in the community, look at the tax rates necessary to basically come up with the dollar amounts that the intention of the original tax rate was. It's standard annual procedure. Went to the Budget Commission meeting last Friday and kind of walked through, you know, basically with the county auditor, their recommended rates based on the assessed values that you will see a slight increase in the assessed values, or not a slight increase, a sizable increase in the assessed values due to their reappraisal over the past summer.
And just for clarity, because I know the answer, but just for clarity, this has nothing to do with our levy, our renewal, or any of that?
Not at all.
Not at all.
The only thing, it would have the levy for the current year, because it doesn't expire until January 1 of '20. So it is in here to make sure the rate is where it needs to be, but it's by no means a renewal, you're not...
It's still in place.
Yes, it's still in place for the calendar year.
Roll call.
Mr. Democia?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Anything further?
That's all I have.
Do you have any recommendation from the CEO?
I have none.
New business. So as you guys have probably read, when Mr. Sampson was here last, at the last ADC meeting, he made a statement that he would do a review and evaluation of the CEO, and he forwarded out those, his rubric or his questions that he would be utilizing to go through that evaluation. And we just thought it would be fair that the entire community get a chance to do that same evaluation, so the guy who had been here at that time for four weeks and now about six weeks would not be the sole, I guess, answer or the sole reviewer and evaluator of the CEO. So we reached out to a firm beyond ourselves that would do, that take that same rubric, get it out into the entire community, and we did bring those results today. And Tony, if you wouldn't mind walking us through?
I certainly, I certainly question, I guess this is a question for Mr. Cawthon, as he is a commission member, but it's alarming to me, number one, that gentleman that was here for an extremely short period of time, and you might say four weeks, that might be generous. Somebody got something to say?
There's a lot of chatter.
We'll have a second hearing of the public, and you could probably speak during that But as I was saying, I think it's alarming that a gentleman that has been here and doesn't even understand our district or know what's been going on in this district for such a short period of time, took it upon himself to, number one, create the rubric all by himself, as he is one commission member sitting on a five-member commission, that each and every one of them have equal voice. And I could be wrong, and I guess this is a question for you, did the commission have any input in creating the rubric and/or doing the evaluation of CEO Hardy?
No, we did not. We were sent out the rubric after the fact, and obviously, that did not sit well with the commission members that were not involved. We were not happy with that process.
For the five, right?
Yep, for sure, yeah.
Yeah, which, I mean, that just sends a strong message in itself. I mean, my opinion, I think he was just sent here to calm the storm and protect state superintendent and probably fluff the CEO a little bit, but that's my opinion. Anyway...
I know there's going to be a second hearing of the public, but just to kind of answer some of the questions that I'm hearing murmured, we did put it out on the social media world, where everybody's kind of connected through the House Bill 70, and we also put it out, and both of the local newspapers put out the survey and the tab and where you could go to take the survey. So to answer that question, it did go out into public media. Okay, Tony, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so we did an evaluation based on the rubric that was created by the chairman, Sampson. It did ask several questions of the specific areas in which, which I think was a simplified version of an evaluation. But based on that, the survey was put out there from March 23 to April 1, and we received over 550 different responses to that survey, where 550 respondents did answer each and every question. And as Mr. Ballard was saying, that it was published in both the Journal, the Chronicle, and on Facebook and other social media outlets through friends of Facebook and what have you. So the questions that were asked of the participants, based on that rubric, overall, how well do you think CEO David Hardy is doing leading Lorraine City Schools? Overall, how confident are you in CEO Hardy's leadership ability? Overall, how confident are you about CEO Hardy's spending priorities? If you could share anything about your experience with Lorraine City Schools under Hardy's leadership, what would it be? What has Hardy done well? What does Hardy need to improve? And then, of course, please provide your impression of state control of Lorraine City Schools. And then there obviously was a question where off of that rubric, we tried to identify who the folks were that were actually taking the evaluation. When they asked the same questions identified in a performance rubric segregated by relationship to the district, are you a student? Did you, are you a teacher or staff member? Parent or family, community organization, or other? Based on those results, again, question one, overall, how well do you think CEO David Hardy is doing leading Lorraine City Schools? There was 80, almost 87% felt that it was poor, 473 responses out of the 550. You had 21 that were satisfactory, 20 responses good, 28 excellent, and two had no opinion. Second question, overall, how confident are you in CEO Hardy's leadership ability? Again, 87.01%, 469 different responses felt that it was poor. Question three, overall, how confident are you about CEO Hardy's spending priorities? Question three, overall, how confident are you about CEO Hardy's spending priorities? Again, out of the 550 different responses, 452 of them felt that he was doing a poor job or is doing a poor job, and that's roughly 83%. If you could share anything about your experience with Lorraine City Schools under Hardy's leadership, what would it be? Common themes fell under chaos, disconnected, poor morale, atmosphere, fear, lack of direction, inexperienced. We do have the full comments someplace, but we didn't feel it was necessary to have those all up here. What was Hardy done, what has Hardy done well? What does Hardy need to improve? Common themes, many said that Hardy has done nothing, needs to improve communication, lack of respect for the community, some praised his willingness to meet with the public, some said he was charming and talked a good game. Again, those full comments are available. And then, you know, we had a few slides here that kind of showed the impression of state control. State control has been horrible for Lorraine. We're 74%, 397 total responses out of 535 for that particular question of state control. The new Academic Distress Commission chair releases questions and criteria for evaluation, and questions are based on your relationship to Lorraine Schools. Accordingly, we are asking the same questions as the new ADC chair. To ensure that you receive the right set of questions, please indicate your relationship to the schools. And we had 37% were teacher or staff member, 28% were parent or family, six, roughly 6% community organization, and then 25% were other, which obviously didn't fall in any of those categories. And then, please rate CEO's Hardy job performance for the following areas, adult supports for Majority there is poor, as we can see, you can see the chart below, roughly 64% rated it poor. More enriching, enriching learning, that was 71% poor, and 14% felt it was excellent. You had extra support for scholars to succeed academically and prepare for college and career. Again, roughly 71% found it to be poor. Culture and climate attendance, behavior and experiences, roughly 64%, just over 64% rated it as poor. And students share opinions about their own learning experiences, and then again, another 64% felt that that was poor. Same thing with teacher and staff, developing a culture and climate of respect, transparency, and high expectations, 90, almost 91% felt it was poor. Providing more opportunities for professional learning and development, just over 80% felt it was poor. Create equity and access for all students, again, just over 80% felt it was poor. Providing better instructional resources and materials, 85% felt that the performance was poor. Please rate CEO Hardy's job performance for the following, provided consistent and transparent communication about students' teaching and learning experiences, 81% felt his performance was poor. Providing more opportunities to participate in school learning events, roughly 71% felt it was poor. And creating community partnerships that provide resources and support to families outside of schools, almost 78% felt his performance was poor. That was your parent in, here, your community organizations. Under the questions, creating local partnerships directly aligned with the commitments to, in the Lorraine Promise, 60% felt it was poor. Sharing resources in support of our families and scholars, almost 70% rated is poor. In ensuring transparency and accountability for serving scholars, again, 70, over 75%, almost 76% rated that performance as poor. All others, engaging in community, 76% poor. Providing excellent education tools and directions, 85% rated as poor. Respecting the Lorraine community, 84% rated as poor. And sharing accurate information with the community, 87% felt the performance was poor. Again, some of the common thing, themes here throughout the comments were bringing transparency, stop hurting Lorraine, culture is worse, doesn't live in Lorraine, things are worse than ever, negativity, respect the community. And again, if anybody want to see those full comments, you're more than welcome to see the full comments, but 550 folks did take the survey, which I think it closed yesterday, is that right?
That is correct.
Yeah, it was shut down yesterday. So again, based on the rubric that was created by the commission chair, the survey was created, and outside of one person doing the evaluation, 550 different people from this community did it. And, you know, I mean, they see it, and most of them live it. So I gotta put some value to those comments and the way they feel. If you really truly believe in community engagement and understanding what the community feels, I guess reaching out to them would give you a pretty good idea. Any questions, comments?
No, just for full disclosure, we are going to share these results with Mr. Sampson and the ADC, so they would have them as he considers in his evaluation that he's going to do what the public is also saying as well.
Thank you for that.
You bet. Any other comments from the board?
Yes, it appears to me, for some reason, the new administrators that he has hired that's throughout the schools seem to have a negative impact on how they are used within the school system. How are they used within the school system?
Would you, would you like to comment on that? You would know better than we would, and your membership would know better than we would. That's a really good question, actually. I don't know how they're being used, but-
Because if, you know, the question I ask, if, if the Title I is used as remediation and they're gone, and these new people have come in and their administration, and you said they're not used as the teachers were to remediate, but their administration, administration is not remediating, then I'm trying to figure out what is the purpose and attitude and job description of the people that are hired that seem to be causing such a disturbance within the school system?
Yeah, if there's no objections, Mr. Pickering, if you, yeah, I mean, like I said, you and your membership would know better than we do.
Our experience this year has been that the majority of the time, these people are spending their time watching teachers and giving teachers what they believe is positive or feedback through a process. One of them's called wetstone. They spend a lot of time watching teachers teach, and we are concerned, we, we would rather them spend time with the students. So to answer the question earlier, too, the actual number was 34, teachers were paid by Title I funds last year, this year zero, and our calculation is that they've hired 30 administrators using those funds. So currently, most of those administrators are just telling teachers how to teach, would be our opinion.
But when are they doing that? Within the classroom?
Yes.
Or are they pulling them out of the classroom and instructing them after the classroom? Or are they giving them early morning work?
Little bit of everything. It's been a distracting way to teach this year. We do, teachers have, at least presented to me, many complaints about constant adults coming in and out of their rooms, watching classrooms, talking to students while they're trying to teach, sometimes talking to the teachers while the teachers are trying to teach, yeah.
I mean, there's been situations where a teacher's been, had an administrator in the room 11 times in one day. 11 times in one day as far as being, you know, it's one thing to give feedback to teachers. I think most teachers are okay with that. But when you have a situation where you're trying to teach and you're constantly being, I would use the word harassed by some administrators, not, again, we're not talking about all. And one of the things, and I will speak to this because I said this publicly to Mr. Hardy back in the summer, and I said this privately to Mr. Hardy, when you're bringing these new administrators in, there's certain things that you have to be able to guarantee me, not only as an educator, but as a member of the Academic Distress Commission. Number one, are they qualified to do their jobs properly? Some of them are. I would question whether some of them are not. They, I don't, I don't believe they are. Do they have the experience to do it? Are you, are you trying to fly an airplane while you're building it? That's kind of the way that I sometimes look at the way some of these situations have been handled. And the other, which is the most important thing, I think, in all this, have these new administrators been able to build the trust with their teaching staff that is required to deal with some of the hardships and difficulties that educators in Lorraine have to deal with? And my answer to that question is soundly no, that they have not, in many cases, built trust with their staff. So if you have those three factors working against a classroom teacher that's trying to reach students, there's going to be situations that are not going to be productive for our students, for our community, for our educators, and for the entire district. And I think that's where we've kind of found where we're at. And based on the survey that Jay did with, with the LEA, based on the survey that you just saw here, there seems to be a consistent reflection of the dissatisfaction of where we're at, at this particular point. I don't know if I answered your question, but, you know, there's a lot of variables that go into this, but-
I'm trying to understand that. So you're saying there's no logical, uniform way that all of these administrators are performing lesson plans to the students?
I can't speak to that because I'm not in every building, so I don't know about, I mean, that might be something that Mr. Pickering will be able to respond to more than I do. I can only look at Lorraine City Schools per se, and, you know, you know, how I am dealt with professionally compared, you know, within my building, there are some teachers that are dealt with differently and handled differently than others. It depends on which, I'm going to call them principals, whether they're deans or, you know, whatever their name, but not everybody is dealt with in the same way or has the same protocol. We kind of even saw that at the beginning with the whole discipline issue that happened in the district. There was a lot of differentiation in terms of how discipline was handled at the beginning of the year, which led to many issues that we saw, so.
Kind of give just one story, and I've given this story publicly before, but in, in a classroom, it was either fourth or fifth grade classroom, a teacher was dealing with three students who were kind of had an altercation, and the one student went over by the door, sat down, and just started sobbing and crying. So while he was dealing with this, he looked up to see one of the deans coming down the hall towards his room, and he was relieved. He felt that he'd get some help. The dean came up to the door, looked down at the kid that was crying, stepped over the kid, walked to the back of the room, got out their iPad, and started evaluating the teacher as the teacher dealt with this situation, and then left without helping the teacher with this situation. This is what teachers are experiencing, and that's disheartening to me because we think we're all here for kids.
We also have a dean that administered-
Now that we have you, have you standing here, I'd like, could you tell me, how many teachers do we actually have in a district?
I think the current number that we have seen is 476.
476, okay. And we had 35 teachers that were on Title I money last year, right? Now, it doesn't quite, maybe you will answer this question, maybe not. Is this district overstaffed now?
Oh, no, absolutely not.
Is this not overstaffed? You would say, you'd say no?
Well, we lost 35 teachers last year compared to those that were, you know, they were absorbed-
You lost 35, how?
Yeah, well, our numbers are about the same as last year, teacher-wise, if that helps.
Retirement, or is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. Well, in order to absorb the 35 teachers that were no longer doing teaching jobs, they had to go into the classrooms. And we had 35 teachers leave the district.
Okay, so that was, that's pretty much, pretty much a wash. I was just, I'm just trying to-
Well, from the teacher's standpoint, but keep in mind those 35 people, if they were still in title services, would be an additional 35 teachers working with kids.
Okay, now, now my question turns to, back to Josh Hill, and you probably won't be able to answer this this time, but how, how many administrators do we have that are temporarily certified? I mean, if you can answer that question, I don't know.
I don't know off the top of my head, honestly. I'd have to look into it.
Because, I mean, I know, I know with the state that you can get, you can get temporary certification for so many years while they're, I mean, so basically, what I guess what I'm saying is, when you bring people that in that maybe aren't, aren't there yet, aren't qualified yet, that you can get them temporary certification for how long?
All depends, a year?
It depends. You can get an alternative license.
Right. One year, two year, forever?
I think as long as they're working on their certification.
I want to know, I want to know what, because I remember thinking about the state report cards and that, and believe me, I'm not, I am not a proponent of state report cards. I don't think one, one type fits all because there's so many things that go, could go into it that they don't put in, okay? But I think that there was a space on there for how many of your staff are actually qualified staff, okay? And we might as well face it, they brought a lot of young people in here that weren't ready to handle this situation, and I'm not saying that they're good or bad people, okay? They, you know, but I'm just saying, they didn't help us out a lot.
But when they're-
Because we're paying for their learning curve.
But when they're administering wrong, wrong medicine to students and doing those types of things, and they're putting our kids at risk, I mean, come on, what licensed, certified, qualified, experienced administrator will take a situation with a kid that's having a panic attack and go take medication from another student, give it to that student?
Well, you know what?
Nobody that knows what they're doing does those types of things. That's inexcusable. It truly is.
We're in a situation, we spent a lot of years doing policy, right? We spent a lot of years doing policy, and policy was put in place for reasons with, you know, with, you know, to have rules to follow. And when you don't have policies that you follow, this is what happens. You, you get disorganization, you get chaos.
Jay, before you go-
Yep.
You said wetstone. What is wetstone?
It is a teacher feedback system by which, it's an online system. We're still trying to figure it out, quite honestly. It just was kind of brought in, and all of a sudden it began to exist. Apparently administrators can add, can criticize or do whatever teachers on an online platform of some sort.
The joke is you got wetstoned. That some teachers will say, oh, I heard you got wetstoned, which means if, those that will log into it, there would be a comment section that if they were in your classroom, that they would be evaluated on, oh, well, they weren't teaching to this particular standard, or it didn't meet the criteria that the person who did the wetstone. So the joke is, oh, you got wetstoned today, which is kind of like a-
Is that the same wetstone that CEO Hardy is a member of the Board of Trustees? Did I see that somewhere?
I don't know.
Interesting.
How many of these administrators spend a percentage of their time working with the students that need remediation?
I don't know the answer, but I haven't heard that it's happening. I don't know, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have anything in the business? We all have any committee reports? Second hearing of the public, please. Pardon?
No, I wasn't going to say anything but listening, and I want to say to the board, something came out and came about today that takes me back years. Title I. I was one of those people who went before Congress and testified for Title I. I was one of those people who went before Congress and testified for Title I programming in the schools, which is compensatory education for disadvantaged students. At that time, and this was back in the 68, 72, because of the reading level and the disadvantage that our students were receiving and the miseducation that they were receiving, particularly minority students in all school districts across the nation. Title I program and myself, and I worked for the State Auditor's Office, as a matter of fact, that's where I'm retired from, for a number of years. And to speak to Josh, and I'm sure that you have it, for those monies that are Title I funds that are being utilized in our district must be accounted for through the program, whether it's a percentage for the teachers or remedial reading, whatever, that those funds are to be utilized for those particular students. We have a problem here in Lorain with that in terms of the fact that our students, and I would have to say, are not receiving the education they need through Title I funding. We have kids who are attending Lorain City Schools, a high rate of them, and Tony, you work with the Boys and Girls Club, know that coming to school with traumas. We don't have the resources and the wraparound resources in our schools to help these children and these families. And I'm not going to come here to put down any teachers or anything because we have some good teachers. I have volunteered, as you know, Tony, all of you know, for a number of years, walking the halls and seeing that our students were getting the type of education they need. But now we have a whole different set. We have X number of students in our district who are eligible for these funds through their IEPs, okay, through language developments, because we have a number of homeless and immigrants who are here. We are an international city. And as such, our kids are losing out on things that we should be doing. It's about our kids. Let's get to our kids. We need nurses in our schools, which is a part of Title I funds that can be utilized if necessary. Okay, we have X number of kids who are in our school district who are on some type of behavioral type of medication, which is something else that we have to deal with. And we need the resources in our buildings. We need people at different children's services. We need nurses. We need counselors, not just when these kids reach seventh and eighth grade, going into high school, and not even knowing what type of credits they may have. These are the problems that we're facing right here, right now, today. Hunger. Many of them are coming to school hungry. And I want to see us also to go and to develop some type of parental accountability. These parents should be accountable for getting their kids to school on time. She was talking about the timeframe, a day for the schools. It's ridiculous. We go, I went to school like years ago, and we did everything. We had, many of them in my age bracket could tell you when the kids got their teeth cleaned every year in school, they had their hair checked, they had their eyes checked. See, you'll have, you know what went through? Ears, everything. And now that no longer exists. We have kids, families, kids haven't been had their immunization shots. So what are we doing? It's not about the kids anymore?
Hey. You want my opinion?
No, I'm saying, it's getting ridiculous.
No, you're right. And that's where unfunded mandates, and that's where political agendas at the state and federal level, that's, we're in state standardized tests that, that has taken away from a lot of those services.
That has changed.
You're exactly right.
And you will know where my position stands on any type of state takeover. I don't think, we'd like that you guys to do it. If you don't do it, then we're supposed to get rid of your butts. But it is a fact that we have some major problems here in Lorain. You're talking about the CEO, the district, let's get down and let's put some action plans down. Everybody sitting here with this rhetoric, let's put some action, let's put some plans in action. Let's get counselors in the schools for these kids. Let's get children's services involved. Let's get our mental health services involved. Now, if we're going to do it, and you were mandated to do it, let's do it. For Title I funding, disadvantaged, I'm sure that Josh goes through, that every penny of Title I funds that are utilized are supposed to be accounted for in that budget, whether it be for teachers or special program, for remedial reading, all of that can be, am I right there? It's Title I funds. And I, you know, I'm sitting here and I'm back here thinking, and I'm saying, oh yeah, I'm going back a long way. Heck, many a year to 68. Title I funds are there to help our students and the families. You know, and I know, that our after-school program, they talk about Boys and Girls Club, who helped feed these kids. I don't know, they had one backpack program on the weekend where kids could take food home. What happened to that?
They cut the funding.
See?
That was a good program.
Yes, it was. It was a very good program, and now it's gone. That's why even with the chief, I wouldn't have talked, went before council, if you recall, to have the curfew. You see those kids out here, nine, 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. If you want to go like to Apple's or some of the stores, the family, you'll see them standing out there begging for money or for food to buy something. They have nobody that's out there. So let's make some parents accountable too. We want to pass some laws? Let's pass some on then, to say if you don't have your child here and there, and your child is not in school and not in attendance, you will be fined. So let's stop it. Let, let, let's please get to the kids. Our kids are out there suffering. Do you all understand that? They're suffering. And as far as that social media crap, you guys go on Facebook and all that, they need to outlaw that crap. But I don't listen to it, don't do it, don't believe it.
Thank you.
But let's get with it and see what the kids are doing. Let, 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 and let's, yeah, there's Title I funds there, and they're to be utilized. But let's utilize them where they have to be utilized. That's for the kids.
We agree. Thank you.
I thought they were being...
Any further from the public, please?
The survey results here, will that be available on the district's website?
We will send them to Mr. Sampson, and if he decides to put them onto the district or whatever, he decides to utilize those, but I will send you a copy.
Okay.
I will send you a copy, and then you can do with them.
Just for the public to see on the district website, it'd be appropriate.
I agree.
Feedback's good.
I agree. Please, next. And as best we can, let's try to stay within the three minutes. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Charmaine Williams. I'm a citizen of Lorain. I came up here because I wanted to address, well, she's leaving, but I wanted to address what she said about the Title I. Absolutely nothing has been done this whole school year, like, nothing. It was the biggest mistake that was made, in my opinion, as far as elementary schools go, because I was volunteering in several elementaries this year, starting at the beginning of the year up until winter break. From what I've seen, these kids are giving up in elementary, and it's because they're not getting what they have been getting in the past. Like, all the way up until the end of last school year, they had Title I services. They had teachers that would come, pull them out of class, because for a lot of them, from what I saw, was, a lot of the classrooms are loud and chaotic at times, so the children that were being pulled were the ones that got distracted easily, the ones that couldn't focus, you know, on the task at hand. So they would get pulled and get the same curriculum that the classroom was getting at the same time to keep them caught up to where they should be. Well, this school year, I watched these babies go from, they had all the confidence in the world coming in first day. By winter break, they pretty much felt defeated because no one has been helping them, giving them that extra help they need from the beginning of the school year all the way up until I stopped volunteering. For those who don't know, I have been in elementary schools volunteering for the last seven and a half school years. And I don't have kids, I just do this because I love these children, like, I fell in love with them. I have a niece and nephew who is in Lorain City Schools, and that's how I got exposed to Lorain City Schools now, because I did grow up here. I was born here. I went to Lakeview, Irving, Southview, that was my, that was my school. They were awesome, by the way. But anyway, I'm more or less fighting for these kids. Like, I, I feel like there isn't enough support, and to take that from them and add more principals makes absolutely no sense. I'm sorry if I offend someone, I have nothing against, well, I understand correctly, against most of the administration that has come in, I have nothing against. Some of them I have seen treat the staff members, the teachers, and everyone else that works in the building, including volunteers, like crap. They make you feel like you're not wanted in their building, especially if you speak up for the kids. If you say something, like, especially with the teachers, I've seen this a lot. The teachers will go to the admin for the issue at hand with the kid, and the admin will go out of their way to try and make the teacher look like they're incompetent. That makes no sense to me. All they're doing is being the advocate for the kids, and they get broken down so much that I've seen teachers who basically were borderline married, popping up in the school building, like, they were all for, you know, it was Rappaport Room, Sesame Street, all in one. I've seen them go from that to just like, what am I supposed to do? They keep taking and taking and taking from us. What am I supposed to do? You know, and then like, I've watched a total of, in the last three to four years, I've watched a total of nine volunteer parents, including myself. I'm not a parent, but you know what I mean. I've watched us be pushed out of the building. Since we've been back from winter break, I have extended offers to help in any way. My phone number has been the same number for nine years. It's in, it's on my niece and nephew's EMA forms, or whatever they're called. You have my number. No one has called me since January, since I started speaking out for the teachers. I gave up my time. I'm talking from the time school starts to the times the babies are going home and I'm getting hugs and they're getting in their cars or the bus or whatever. And no one has called me and asked me for help, but they keep claiming, the admin keeps saying, we need help. The parents that used to volunteer have now refused to even step foot in the building except for parent-teacher conference. They won't support any of the events because they feel like they're not wanted, you know? And then they talk about reading, and they want the reading to get better. Well, there's a school, I'm not going to say the school, because, I mean, I won't put them on blast, but there is an elementary school this year that kids have had no access to the library. Then they turn around and send home a fundraiser form to do a readathon. Where are they supposed to read? Where are they supposed to get it from? I'm sorry, I know my time is up. I just wanted to get up here and let everyone know...
Thank you.
That the Title I services, there is none. As of this year, there is none. Last year, those Title I teachers were absolutely amazing. I saw with my own eyes because I was there every day. They were amazing, and they actually helped these babies improve. If we can get that back, it would change so much on the elementary level.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I reclaim my time.
Reclaiming your time.
Reclaiming my time.
You got to tweet it up, are you?
Yes, I'll tweet that. Ms. Johnson, I encourage you to please get into some of those buildings and speak with teachers, preferably teachers that you don't know, you have no connection to, 10 random teachers, and I, I would be willing to bet that you will hear their concerns that we're voicing here. Title I, it might look good on paper, but they're holding events called literacy nights, Title I literacy nights, where they're not speaking about literacy. Parents were, I, I was the only parent at Lorain High School that came for the first literacy night, and they spoke about attendance. That was it. They had, they ended up sending me the PowerPoint presentation that they had for parents for literacy night, and it was basically the same thing. It was about attendance. So I don't understand how those Title I funds, even though like, look good on paper, are, the services are getting to the parents and to the students. I don't understand how kids with IEPs, which are legal documents...
Yes.
Their needs are not being met. There is no one there to provide the pull-out time for them. This is an attack on Mr. Hardy because he's Mr. Hardy. This is us fighting for our kids.
Anyone else?
IEPs is a legal document.
Hi, Mary Miller. Just to kind of piggyback off what Mrs. Washington just spoke about, the, the literacy nights for the high school, which, to my understanding, is supposed to be one per quarter, and the teachers had done that previously, you know, previous to this year, there weren't any literacy nights until February, they're going the third quarter, after we started asking, why aren't there literacy nights that the Dina families were supposed to be now in charge of? That was the premise of having the Dina family, that they would be under the Title I funding wording in there. That was part of the reasoning given. One per quarter, I believe, is how that is supposed to be set up, so that was just my take on that. And on the live feed, TV 20, you can see, somebody made a comment, I believe referring to the article where Mr. Hill, maybe, last Wednesday's art, or article, I believe, speaking to where, like, only 5% of the actual funding is going towards the deans, and the one chief is being paid for, you know, the total, I believe, somewhere around $175,000, including the benefits, are earmarked from the Title I funds. And that we, that it's not new, that we had somebody previous to this year being paid for out of those funds. But we also had 34 or so teachers being paid for out of those funds. So that's the problem that we're having. We're, as parents, you know, we're asking, how can that be helpful to our children? So I just kind of wanted to add on to that, that they need the bodies in front of them and not just overseeing, or more like monitoring the teachers. I have heard from teachers as well that they are, you know, multiple times daily, just kind of being stalked almost instead of an evaluation. You know, an evaluation, it would be something that is a professional way to go about, you know, seeing how a person would perform their duties and that. So we just think that it's a little bit unnecessary. And also, I noticed that there have been teachers in the past who have received great evaluations, and then I've heard this year, the total opposites on their evaluations as well. So I would hope that would be taken into consideration if somebody for 20 years has received, you know, flying colors, and all of a sudden this year, it's not so good. We have to look into things like that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? So I've got a couple things. On the 13th of April, we're going to be holding a work session as a special board meeting on at Lorain County Community College, and we're going to be having that special meeting with East Cleveland's Board, along with Youngstown's Board. So it's the three schools that are in distress coming together to think, how do we continue to work through this academic distress situation that we are in? The public's invited. It is an open board meeting. We will have lunch served, so if you would, if you intend on coming, please let us know you're going to be there, just so we can have a head count. But it is an open board meeting, so everyone's, everyone is welcome. Number two, it's going to be from 9:00... Number two, it's going to be from 9:00 until 12:30 on April the 13th. Number two, it's a Saturday morning, at the college in room 114. I've also shared with Mr. Hill the evaluation. I'm not sure which channels you can send that through to request, but I am requesting that we put it up on the website, and whomever handles that, if you could forward that to them, I'd greatly appreciate it. The evaluation that we've done, that would be helpful. I've already shared it with Mr. Sampson, I sent it to his email. He has it as well. And I guess we, any guys, anybody have anything further for this meeting? Everybody's clear?
I would just like to say something, if I may. Recently, Lorain High lost Shep Smith, and I just want to kind of make a public statement, condolences for the community, and just say, from knowing him as a colleague, he was a great man, great teacher, and touched many students' lives, and he will sorely be missed.
Very good.
Yeah, there's no doubt about it.
Those are my closing remarks, and since you got them, no, you've got it.
Do you have an evaluation to do that for people, know when you're going to start, and where to tell them? Because I don't do that on the other social media. I'm not on the social media.
It was also in the newspapers, but...
Was it, was it, was it in the headline?
There, good. I'd have to go back and...
Was it in the paper? How, where was it in the paper, and what was it on?
You don't work for the paper.
I didn't see that either.
Well, they have to talk to the newspapers. We don't work for them.
Announce it again, so they can hear you.
No, I'm just saying, it was in the newspapers. We shared it with the media. I can't tell you where, I don't work for the paper, I don't know where they section their stuff.
So when you called up me, you said, "We want to do a survey, we want to put it in the paper."
Just like our board meetings, we send out their information, and where they put it or where it's placed is completely up to them.
No headline?
I can't, I don't even get the headlines when I think I deserve the headlines. And sometimes, when I don't want the headlines, I do get the headlines. So I can't tell them where to do that.
I just want to know, because I heard it was from the thing, he's going to have a survey, but I was waiting, I couldn't find it, nobody else. People were asking, a girl called me and asked me about it. I said, "I don't know." I said, "I don't know where it is."
Okay.
They said it was a talk about, a lot of people, the community was talking about the survey, but they didn't know where it was, because people admire some of my children, they don't get on social media.
Sure. Right. And that's why we try to do it, social media and in the printed media, and if you didn't see it, I apologize for that, but we did send it out to all those outlets. We did. And also, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Cuthbert, because I think you were going to talk about Mr. Wilhelm.
Yeah, I was just going to say also, too, the Athletic Booster Club president, Mr. Wilhelm, also passed away. So it's been a tough week for Lorain City Schools, losing people that really cared about Lorain, cared about the schools.
True pillars of this community.
Absolutely. So we have some amazing people that work in this district that have helped our community, helped our students, and unfortunately, we lost two great men this week.
Amen.
Good question.
Could you announce that?
April 13th, Saturday morning, April 13th, from 9:00 to 12:30, we're going to have a combined boards work session with all the boards who are in academic distress. We're going to have some readouts from legal, we're going to have some of our legislators there, we're going to have some updates on what's going on in Columbus, and we're going to have board work on what do we do in distress, and what do we do as we're coming out of distress. So those are going to be some of the topics.
Where was it actually located, at the college?
At the college, in the Stocker Building, excuse me, the Spitzer Building, room 114.
Can you send me a formal invitation?
Yes. Yes. You silly. Next board meeting?
April 9th.
April 9th, 5:00 here. Now, our next board meeting will be April 9th, in this room right here, and if there's no further discussion...
April 9th.
April 9th, I'm sorry. What did I say?
You said it.
Oh, okay. Week from the day. Need a motion to dismiss, my friend.
Motion. To adjourn. Second?
Motion. Girl call?
Mr. Demakia?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
This has been a production of Lorain City Schools TV20 WLCS.